Everybody stand, we're gonna have a salute to the flag and we're gonna have a moment of silence after this. Matthew, could you lead us in the pledge, sir?
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, that brings us to item one.
Receive a presentation from the Department of Human Resources on the selection of Alicia Bennett as the October 2024 Employee of the Month, making Alicia eligible to use the parking space designated for this program.
Good morning, Nyjah Edwards, Human Resources Director. Good morning Chairman Mashburn and Board of Supervisors. I am honored to share with you why Alicia Bennett was picked as Human Resources nomination for the county's Employee of the Month program. Alicia began working in the Department of Human Resources in March 2023 as a Human Resources analyst. In her role, Alicia performs a variety of critical recruitment, personnel, classification, and labor functions, and does so with a consistent, positive attitude and stellar customer service. Within HR, Alicia is the one you can count on. She makes time to assist others even when she really does not have the time to do so. She is supportive, providing guidance and help, and does so even when she doesn't have the answer. She'll go and research it at a minimum just to make sure that her team members have resources. Her disposition is friendly, sincere, and thoughtful, and because she is so soft-spoken and somewhat reserved, she can quite go often unnoticed. Alicia has a calm and humble vibe about her, and even when others are shouting her praises, it is amazing to see that she is even more humble and gracious in accepting them. Recently, one of our divisions had more vacancies and leaves of absence than the number of staff actually working. This meant that the additional responsibilities were placed on the staff members who were at work. A staff member found that they might not meet a required deadline for a division activity that was due that day. When Alicia heard about this challenge, she stayed after hours with the employee to assist them in meeting the required deadline. This simplifies Alicia's selflessness, dedication, and initiative, as Alicia does not even work in that division, nor was she asked to assist. She saw a need and acted. She is a team player. I have been with the county for a little over six months, and in this time, when I encounter someone in another department who has worked with Alicia in some form or fashion, they nearly always provide some type of accolade or commendation about Alicia, even when there is a challenging situation where they didn't receive the answer that they thought that they should, but admit that their experience in speaking with her was extremely positive. I myself receive some sort of verbal or written commendation about Alicia unsolicited one to two times per month. And that's amazing in a world where everyone just likes to complain about everything, right? HR division managers report that they too hear great things about Alicia from county staff in the course of their conversation about other HR matters. County department leadership and staff describe Alicia as having exemplary customer service and communication. She is attentive and responsive to their needs and thorough in her thought and approach to matters for which she is assisting them. As HR continues to reorganize as we bring on new staff, the departments Alicia serves emphatically request that she not be reassigned away from them. These requests are the product of the way Alicia cares and builds relationships with her departments. She takes the time to listen, understand, and provide solutions to their requests, even if the solution is not always the one expected. She is gentle in her approach and explains the whys. I'm almost there. One item I have asked my Training and Development Officer Frances Stokes to work on is a continuous training model that helps instill a culture of excellent communication and customer service within our department. After receiving so many accolades about Alicia, it is clear she simplifies both. I began to wonder what makes Alicia so successful and if we can use her approach in modeling this training. Frances met with Alicia, and this is what we learned about Alicia's communication and customer service approach in her own words. Be honest and transparent with customers. State your concerns and why. Ask for and extend grace. No questions or concerns are too big or too small. Take time to meet, to gain, and promote understanding. Don't just tell them, walk the path with them. Experience their wins and their losses with them by celebrating and empathizing. Adapt to the way they prefer to communicate and respect them. Give your customer time to respond and digest the information. Be kind in saying no. Follow up after the situation to see how things are going, and then acknowledge your mistakes and take ownership. Evaluate yourself on how you are partnering with your customers. These are just a few of Alicia's guiding lights, which clearly reflect the county's ideal values. That is integrity, dignity, excellence, accountability, and leadership. For these reasons and more, Alicia Bennett is named October's Employee of the Month. And I think Alicia has a few words that she would like to share.
Well, thank you, Nyjah, for those beautiful words. I had no idea she was gonna put in some of the words that I had mentioned to them or to Frances at the time. But I really wanted to take this time to thank my team. I'm truly just a reflection of the kindness that my team extends, the hard work that they put in, their resilience. I'm also a reflection of, I see some of my departments here, so I'm also a reflection of the people that I work with. They do amazing work to then serve the community, so I definitely honor and respect that. So I am truly the me in this, in this whole, you know, equation of Employee of the Month. I am truly humbled by this. But it's, as far as who I'm celebrating, it's the team and it's the people that I work for. So I'm gonna stop before I get emotional up here, but honestly, it really is a true honor, and I want to thank everybody here. I think I have my team members back here. So thank you so much for everything that you do. Let me turn to them. I feel like, you know, being able to have this podium and this stage, I want to show my appreciation to you all. You all work your tails off, and it's something that is truly inspiring to me, and it keeps me going. And the irony in it is that on my rough days, it's my team that keeps me going. It's their smiles, it's their conversations, it's just the spirit that they bring. So honestly, I don't, it doesn't matter if you're on day one of working with our team or you're close to retirement. You have made a huge impact, not only on me, but the people that we serve here, so thank you. Thank you for this.
Bring your team down here and take a picture. Come on, y'all. You can't brag on a team like that and then have them come down here and meet everybody. Come on down.
What do you want to comment on? So just a general comment?
That's right.
I've never done it before, so...
There ain't enough room. Some of y'all can come up here. All right, some of y'all are gonna have to come up here, I think. I don't know. I'm good with it. Nope, all right, we're good. They're gonna make it fit.
Like you work together.
Okay, here we go. Ready? On three. One, two, three.
More public. We got a lot of public today. There you go. All right, well, it looks like we're at items from the public, and I do have some public who would like to speak today. I have three cards. Let me make sure they're all on public comment. They are. All right, so the first up is Marissa Alkazar. And just to remind everybody, you get about three minutes, and then that's it. And the next person goes, and the next person goes, and...
Good morning. Thank you, Chair, and all of the Board Supervisors. My name is Marissa Alkazar. My husband and I own La Michoacana Vallejo Ice Cream and Bakery. I am here representing all of these food vendors from Solano County that are standing behind me, as well as those who have sent the letters we presented to you. We need your help. The number of unpermitted pop-ups in Solano County is growing because of other cities and counties around us are cracking down on them. These unpermitted pop-ups are affecting our businesses. The quality of life here in Solano and the cities and counties revenue through self-tax, permitting, and licensing fees. They are creating unsafe situations throughout the county, both by not adhering to food safety rules and because of the lack of concern of traffic and pedestrian safety. Permitted businesses are currently required to adhere to strict food safety regulations and are subject to regular inspections. Our employees are required to be served safe certified, and we must have an appropriate handwashing and toiletry stations, trash and rotten management insurance, among other things. The pop-ups are not being required to do any of that, even though they presented a significantly higher risk of harming the public than we do. We are specifically asking you to do the following. Require the Health Department to go out on sweeps more regularly and visit locations more than once since the pop-ups come back quickly, sometimes even the next day. Increase the penalties for getting impounded equipment back after the first time so that the consequences for not complying are greater than the benefit of ignoring the regulations. Put pressure on cities to cooperate with the Health Department to make enforcement of regulations a higher priority than it currently is. Create a public awareness campaign that informs citizens why it is unsafe to eat food from unpermitted pop-ups and how it hurts the economic development of the county to visit unpermitted businesses. If you continue to not make it a priority to enforce the regulations on the pop-up vendors, we ask that you stop penalizing those of us who have followed the regulations and stop collecting permit fees and stopping inspections and any other regulation enforcement. Permitted licensed insured businesses provide much less risk to the community health than the unpermitted vendors, and it is unfair to punish us for getting permitted. To be clear, we are not asking for you to shut down pop-up vendors. We are asking that you ensure that they comply with the same requirements that all of us businesses do. Without your help, the county is going to lose more businesses and will not be able to attract new ones, both of which affect the revenue that our county needs to provide services. Please help us. Thank you for your time. Gracias.
Thank you. Supervisor Vasquez has something to share.
Are there other speakers on this?
No.
Just a question to County Council. Would Land, East and Transportation Committee be the one that takes this up?
It could be.
Okay.
The board's decision.
Mm-hmm. All right, then.
If you would like to refer that to it.
All right.
We'll be dealing with two components, right? So you have the health permit side, and then you have the land use side.
Yep.
A lot of these vendors are in the cities, so we need to work with the cities
Cities, yep.
to make sure that they comply with their zoning regulations.
Thank you.
All right, next up is Mr. Orley. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
I'd want to make a comment. I do appreciate them coming forward, the owners of the restaurants. I think most of you, well, you're all in Solano County and maybe most of you are in Vallejo. It is an unsafe situation. I have witnessed almost crashes being on Highway 80, looking at the former Cook property, which is now, you can't go there anymore because of all the movement of the dirt. But it would be bright lights and people literally going from the fast lane to get to the exit to figure out what the heck was going on. Folks running across lanes of traffic to deliver food because people are circling the block to get it. And not to mention the comments that were made about the environmental health in terms of handwashing and, you know, having all of the required permits and what have you. So I do want to thank you for coming forward. I can share with you that I've worked directly with James Bezak and indirectly with Trey Strickland to address these issues, particularly within Vallejo. And, you know, you're right, there is some more teeth we can put into our, at our end to enforce. But unfortunately, we also rely on the cities to provide support. And I can tell you from the city of Vallejo's perspective, at least from what I've heard from council members and policy direction, they're not necessarily interested in helping us in helping environmental health. So I'm gonna throw that out there for a variety of reasons, but I do want to thank you all for coming forward. I appreciate it. Yes. Well, no, you'd have to pull a card and you could say it up there, so... Well, so, again, you have to pull a card and speak at the podium, so thank you.
Well, if we can't get some help with enforcement from the cities, the sheriff also still has jurisdiction over the entire county, and so we may be able to get some help from the sheriff.
Well, I just want to also thank everyone for coming out and sharing those words and just making sure that we follow through and help you as you move forward because you are complying and doing everything right. And so we want to make sure that the pop-ups are doing the same, and thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you.
Everybody good? Okay. Mr. Orley, you're up, sir.
Good morning. I want to second that previous speaker. That is a major issue everywhere, particularly in Sassoon. I know these pop-up vendors, if you go back into the politics, some say it's part of a slave trade, some of these pop-up vendors, and there should be rules and regulations everywhere. And they don't need our sympathy, they need action. And I'm gonna segue, and the reason I'm here today, I'm gonna come back to cats, which I've seen no action over the last couple of years. I've made five pleas for it. I'm not part of any volunteer organization. I do spend about 500 bucks out of my pocket feeding feral cats. And the reason I'm here today is the explosion of kittens unwanted cats. I feed at McDonald's in North Texas. We have about 10 kittens in the back. And I work with volunteers. We can't control the population because there's no appointments, low-cost spaying and neutering. To take them to a vet costs 200 bucks. And until we can control the population, which Solano County fails at that to do it adequately, I'd hate to be a homeless person. I look at a lot of people in this room if I was homeless. I see a lot of people in this room that would just walk on by. We gave the same look at feral cat populations. Like I said, there's money out there, there's a lot of government waste in pork. More money gets to be allocated to the spay and neuter. And the people, the volunteers, do all the work, but give us some appointments. I know feral volunteers that need 10 appointments and they're only given one or two. Meanwhile, the kitten population's getting worse. We spend more on pest prevention. I spend 70 bucks a month in my own house just for pest control. If we do the same thing to cats, we probably, I wouldn't have to come here anymore. So hopefully this one or two of you will listen to this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Ms. Keller.
Good morning, Board. I just want to say thank you for the literacy program for mental health and for me going back to high school. That's a blessing in itself. And that's to the literacy program at the library in Vacaville. Katie is the director. And the mental health in Vacaville, they... And myself, of course, if it wasn't for me putting one foot in front of the other and the will to finish each course at the literacy library, I wouldn't be here today to honor them. When I first went to the library, I told Katie I didn't think I knew the sounds of the alphabets. And she said, "Everybody has their own way of reading, and you can find yours." And at my church, we have this thing. Give it three weeks because the first week you won't understand or learn anything. So I followed the same thinking at the literacy program. And after a year and some months, here I am. And that gave me the courage to start high school for my GED because I have to do my GED. I wanted to do my diploma. However, I went to continuation school growing up as a child, and Mary Bird had a fire, and they lost all my transcripts. So I have to do my GED. And I didn't know how much I love to learn now as an adult. And I just, if I could, I would be at school every day, all day, and at the literacy program, of course, on Wednesdays. I have great counselors, and of course Katie. But I would like it if we could have more funds and more time because I can't get enough of the classes at the library. I would love to be able to read to the children, maybe, if that was an option. I would love to be able to do that. So if you guys could, maybe get together and think about that. Oh, sorry, the time.
Okay.
So thank you for listening to me, and thanks to the literacy program. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, that's all I have for items from the public. So that moves us to additions or deletions from the agenda, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, no changes are recommended this morning.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Thank you all.
So ordered by a vote of 5-0?
All right, and that brings us to public comment on the consent. And I don't know if any of these are on consent.
I have no cards for public comment on consent, sir.
All right, I have no cards for public comment on consent. Do any of the board members have any items that they'd like to speak on or pull?
If not, second.
All right, I got a motion and a second on consent. Please vote.
So ordered by a vote of 5-0?
All right, thank you all. That brings us from consent to the regular calendar, and first up is the East Vallejo Fire Protection District.
Conduct a quarterly meeting of the East Vallejo Fire Protection District Board of Directors.
Good morning, Chair Mashburn.
You're on.
Good morning, Chair Mashburn, members of the Board. Nancy Nelson, Senior Management Analyst with the County Administrator's Office. I'm here to introduce this morning Deputy Chief Gonzalez with the Vallejo Fire Department.
Good morning, Supervisors. I appreciate you having me here today. This report is for responses performed in the first quarter of the 2425 fiscal year. The Vallejo Fire Department responded to the following calls in the East Vallejo Fire Protection District area. It was 182 calls total. 142 of those calls were EMS-related. 40 of those calls were fire-related. With that, there's been five development reviews for, let's, a new accessory dwelling unit at 40 Woodrow, outdoor sales lot and structure at Zero Gary Road, a new single-family dwelling garage at 1211 Bush Avenue, a new accessory dwelling unit at 1171 Lewis, and a solar and battery storage system at the Old Sire or New Vulcan site on Lake Herman Road. There's been zero fire investigations in that quarter and zero weed abatement complaints in that quarter. The Vallejo Fire Department's primary mission is to safely protect the lives and property of our citizens and residents of the East Vallejo Fire Protection District. We value customer service as the foundation of our organization, and thank you for allowing us to serve the district.
All right, do any board members have any questions? I have no cards from the public. I do have, I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
One, is there, is it possible to get a report or a copy of the report on the fire at the electrical battery storage?
The plan review? There was no fire there.
Oh, there was no fire. Okay, well, then a copy of the plan review?
Yes.
Yeah, so we know exactly what's going in down there. We have other issues around battery storage that are going on in the county.
This particular battery storage is after the meter, and it's for just infrastructure and electricity at the site itself.
Oh, okay, all right. Disregard then. And then my second question is that it seemed that there's an uptick in the fire calls over what you guys normally report. Normally, there's only a couple of fire calls and a whole lot of medical. This time, there's 40 fire calls. That's a lot.
But it's seasonal, really, so when you come into the summer months, a lot of the, a lot of the East Vallejo Fire Protection District areas in our city are rural unincorporated grasslands. So there's fires that start from a multitude of reasons, and that's usually the uptick in those types of incidents.
Okay. All right, just curious, because like I said, normally when you guys report, there's like 10 fire calls, and then the rest are all medical, and this time it was 40.
Yeah.
What's going on? All right, well, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, item 17.
Conduct a public hearing required by the Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982, TEFRA, and consider adopting a resolution approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority, CMFA, in an amount not to exceed $61 million for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, rehabilitation, renovation, installation, improvement, and/or equipping of land, buildings, facilities, and/or equipment, including but not limited to an expanded capacity for transfer and processing of municipal solid waste and rolling stock and collection, for the collection, transfer, and processing of municipal solid waste, including associated equipment and appertices thereto by Recology Incorporated for approximately $10 million for the facilities within Solano County.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. We're here today to ask you to do two things. One, we're gonna ask you to conduct a TEFRA hearing, and then we're gonna ask you to approve bonds for the Recology Corporation in the amount of $61 million. Of that $61 million, $10 million will be used in Solano County at two locations, in Vacaville and in Vallejo. The TEFRA stands for Tax and Equity Fiscal Responsibility Act, and simply what that is, is the jurisdiction that's issuing tax-free bonds provides the members of the public the opportunity to come and speak for or against the issuance of tax-free bonds. of tax-free bonds. The California Municipal Finance Authority is a joint powers authority that the county belongs to, along with about 350 other jurisdictions in the state. Recology approached CMFA, as they have in the past, and asked them to issue the bonds on their behalf. We hold a TEFRA hearing because of the jurisdictions in our county that are participating in the bond issuance. The bonds will be issued by CMFA. They are the sole responsibility of the borrower. The county will have no legal or moral obligation for the project or repayment of the bonds. CMFA will share a portion of the fees that they charge Recology with the county, should amount to about $2,000 to cover our costs. And I'm sure my good friend Ian will be on the lookout for that when it comes in. The proceeds, as you heard in the title, it's, it's about a whole paragraph that lists what they can use the money for. But basically, it's for equipment and rolling stock and whatever's necessary to move the, the waste and process it properly. So with that, I would ask for that you would conduct a public hearing and approve the bond issuance.
Any questions from the board before I open the public hearing? All right, open the public hearing. I have no cards from members of the public to speak on this item. Just making sure, looking around, and I'm going to close the public hearing. And looking for some actions from the board.
So I moved behind him. You got the word.
There we go. We have a motion and a second on that item.
Well, I was sitting here waiting for you to.
Why is that? But thank you, Mark.
Right, go. Please vote.
The motion includes both actions, right?
It is whatever are elected if we shall send.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So ordered by a vote of 5-0?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Spend it wisely.
All right.
Ian have to work too hard.
Madam Clerk, that brings us to item eight.
Receive a presentation on the preparations and logistics for the upcoming November 5th, 2024 general election. You're on.
Good morning, Chair Mashburn, members of the board. Tim Flanagan, the Registrar Voters, and the Chief Information Officer, and joined by John Gardner here today, Assistant Registrar Voters. We're here today to make sure that you've heard the news that there's an election coming up this fall. So we wanted to give you a quick brief on our plans to offer a safe and secure election this fall, and make sure you have an opportunity to ask questions. One of the things we'd like to do and start, I've got a few slides here today. I'm going to start here and then hand it over to John. I just remind you of some of our guiding principles and core values for offering elections. And it really boils down to trustworthiness, transparency, integrity, and making sure we can have repeatable results when we, if we were to have to recount a ballot. So we want to make sure that all, all elections are fair and free to all registered voters, that we're transparent with our outcomes. We hit one vote for one registered voter, and we can verify that's the case. And really want to make sure that our professional standards are beyond compare. So the high-level plan here, we offer a number of different ways for the residents of Solano County to register to vote and to vote. We have 100% by, by state law, 100% of registered voters in California in Solano County receive a vote-by-mail ballot. Those are going to be hitting the mail this October 4th. And October 7th, we will be voting center, a voting place here in this building. We have limited contact voting, where we have drop-off locations around the county for people to drop their vote-by-mail ballots. There's 15 locations for 30 days, and we added an additional 10 just before the election. And finally, we do offer in-person voting for people that still prefer to go and cast their ballot on Election Day in person. 70 locations around the county. All registered voters have a polling place that they can choose to go to, to either vote or drop off their vote-by-mail ballot on the same day. And of course, we are preparing with our local, local law enforcement, making sure that our, our staff are trained in de-escalation techniques in case there's a little bit of extra energy at, at in-person polling places this coming fall on November 5th. So we're doing the best we can to prepare. And John's going to give a little bit more detail about the, the polling places, some high-level information about our voting security, and just to give you and anyone who's watching a sense of how this voting process works.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. Good morning. Most of the information is not new. We've been conducting elections with this model since well before 2022 and even into COVID. Geographically, we just have a presentation that shows the, the spread of all the locations that are available for voters, so evenly spread out throughout the county. One thing to note is that the addition of the PSPS locations, the little battery symbol there, we're prepared in the event of an emergency in any of the cities, if we had to close a polling location, we have a dedicated site that will always have power. It has extra voting booths, extra equipment, extra space, so that we can realign voters to that other location. So it's just preparing for emergencies. This ballot is a little bit complicated. November general election, as we presented before, we had 21 districts consolidate into this election, and that requires us to kind of look at what ballot information each voter should get, very specific information to each voter depending on where you live. And as we start laying these districts on top of each other, that generates a bunch of different ballot types for us. Specifically, we had about 107 ballot types for this election. Yeah, custom tailored to every voter's address. If you look just at the city of Fairfield, there's 38 different combinations of ballots based on if you live in this council district or this school district or this community college district or the Solano irrigation district. Added a lot of types. So monitoring that, doing all that prep work ahead of time was a lot of work by our staff to make sure we get the right ballot to the right voter. Ballot handling. Vote-by-mail is going to be a big part of the election. Usually, about 90% of the turnout is vote-by-mail ballots. So we have a lot of precautions and checks in place to make sure those vote-by-mail ballots are handled correctly. Specifically, we have these checks when the envelope comes into us, that we have to make sure the envelope is the correct envelope for the election. Is this the envelope we sent to the voter? If that matches, we check the signature. Is this the signature for the voter? Did they forget to sign it? Do we need to send out some notification to the voter? If we can move on, is the voter still eligible? Have they voted anywhere else in the state or the county using one of the other methods? Did they move out of the county? Is, is that a situation we have to check on? All this is happening in real time, 100% checked by humans in our office. There's no machine that's automating it. Once that's good, we look at the contents of the envelope. We're prepared to open it and take the ballot out. Is there just one ballot inside the envelope? Is there any ballot in the, is it a ballot for this election? So we're making sure as we go that we, we do have a valid envelope. Did we get a valid ballot for that? And we're tracking that and moving that forward. Finally, to the scanning process where they have to also verify that the number of ballots they're scanning matches the number of envelopes that we checked in. And we're constantly auditing those numbers throughout the day. As I said, a high number of vote-by-mail ballots, we expect about 200,000 vote-by-mail ballots, probably about 20,000 in person on Election Day. We also pick up our ballot boxes every day. That's important to our security. Those locations that Tim mentioned, they're picked up every day by our staff. Same thing with our ballots from the post office. We send two people over to pick them up directly. Throughout the day, we balance incoming and completed ballots, and we have these checkpoints along the way for each of those security steps that I talked about. So if we receive 5,000 ballots in, we need to show that we signature verified 5,000 ballots. If we didn't, we have some notes of the exceptions. Then when we go to extract ballots, we know that we have 5,000 ballots now to match the envelopes. And then we'll scan those and get them ready to be counted. Same thing. Do we have 5,000? So there's a log that goes on with the ballots as they get batched up and moved through the system. And Mike, my deputy, and myself, we don't go home for the day until we make sure we balance everything that we received for the day, so we know exactly where it is in the process. Highly recommend getting alerts. This is a system that the Secretary of State sets up, but we've also have this here locally since about 2013. You can sign up. We have an easy button on our website. We'll send a text alert that says we've mailed a ballot to you. More importantly, that we've received your ballot. If you use our drop boxes, you'll get it either the same day or the next business day. We'll send a text message if we count your ballot, or more importantly, if we can't count your ballot and there's a problem. Maybe you forgot to sign it, or the signature didn't match. We'll tell you to contact our office to get help. So it kind of takes out the mystery of what happened to my ballot once I dropped it off somewhere. So those are really important. And now, for something a little different, the return processing. I want people to understand kind of what happens on election night. As per normal, at around 8 o'clock or 8:15, Tim and I will get together, and we will post the first totals that we have. And those totals represent just the vote-by-mail ballots we've received up to that point. It most likely won't include ballots that were dropped off on Election Day, because those don't get back to our office till 9 or 10 o'clock at night. There's no way we can get those processed through all those checks. So that first result would be about 75, 80,000 votes, the vote-by-mail ballots received up to that point. Then as the night goes on, we'll add in the precinct results. As they trickle into our office through the garage, they'll come up, and we usually wrap that up around 10 or 11 o'clock at night. Then we will post on our website what we call unprocessed vote-by-mail ballots. These are the ballots dropped off at Election Day that we could not process, and it's going to be a pretty big number, 50,000 to 60,000 ballots. So if you go home on Election Night, or you close things up at midnight when we're done, and you look at the results, if it's close, look at the unprocessed ballots, because over the next three days, we're going to be adding 20,000 to 25,000 ballots each day to the total. That'll be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. So the numbers could change. And these are valid ballots that we've received and secured. We just couldn't process them. So those numbers will keep going up. So we'll do those updates Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, until we finish all those unprocessed ballots, maybe Monday of the next week. We'll continue to receive ballots by mail if they're postmarked on Election Day, but those are very small numbers, right? Less than 2,000 or so. We're doing signature cures up until and through Thanksgiving. The folks can cure their signature, and we'll be watching for those and updating those numbers as well. Again, really low numbers, less than 1,000 usually are outstanding for signature cure. And then the last part is the certification of results. There was a new law passed, AB 3184. It requires all the counties to certify on the same day, which is December 3rd. That's 28 days after the election. So we'll hold the election open until that day. We'll do signature cures until Sunday at 5:00 PM. That's the Thanksgiving weekend. So after shopping, get your signature cure letter to us. Okay, and I think that's it?
So last note, next week, we'll be posting a message to all, the entire county to remind them that as of October 7th, we will be prohibiting electioneering on this site because it is a voting place. So that will inform, inform our staff that they won't be allowed to wear any, any sort of propaganda that supports or demotes a candidate or a, or a measure. I'm just encouraging them to remember that this is a voting place as of October 7th. So you'll see that message next week.
So October 6th, I'm okay.
If you so chose. So that's what we have for you today. So we're here for questions or comments.
I got Supervisor Brown up here with a question.
So, John, AB 3184, could you run through that, what you just said? What does that mean?
Yeah. So a bill was passed that requires all the counties to certify results on the same day, which is the last day possible, which is 28 days after Election Day.
And the rationale was?
We're the referee. We don't, we don't offer explanations that why these laws are passed.
Good answer.
Yeah, no, that's why he gets, what he gets. That just doesn't make sense to me, but that's fine. Okay.
Do you have to do it at all the same time, or just the same day?
The, the same day.
So I have a question, guys.
Go for it.
And I've asked you this before, but I know that I'm going to get this question from the public, so I'm going to ask it up here. And this is about the envelope that our ballots come in. And on that envelope, there's a space on the flap for somebody to sign with their name if they are the individual who is dropping off that ballot. And it used to be, we verified that back in the day. I can remember, going upstairs, there was always somebody up there, one of your staff or one of the deputies, and they'd make sure I was the person who was dropping it off, and it was supposed to be dropped off by me. Now, we got people dropping 35 ballots in a box at a time, and nobody checks anything. Nobody knows. And so, so that said, either we need to have that on the envelope and do what we said we were going to do, or take it off the envelope because it's superfluous. But what's, what's the deal with the, the signature and the requisition for somebody to have that in order to be able to drop off a ballot? Because nobody's checking when somebody drops 35. I can tell you, when they walk up out front out here and drop 30 of them in the box, right? Because they went over here to an apartment complex and picked them all up from everybody and said, hey, I'll drop that for you. Nobody's checking. So what, what are we doing?
It's true. So the, the short answer is there's election code that requires us to include the option for someone to make an attestation that they're dropping it off on behalf of. So we must.
So there's a law that says we got to do that?
There's a law that says we must have it on the envelope. There is unfortunately not an enforcement mechanism in election code to require us to verify that attestation. So if someone's dropping off on behalf of, and there's not, it is not signed, we must still accept that envelope and process it. And then go through all of the security that we have in place to verify that the valid, that is a valid ballot, a valid signature, a valid, a valid ballot included. And I do want to remind you that there are post office boxes around the state as well that double as ballot drop boxes, where people can drop off their own ballot, their family's ballot, their friend's ballot, and in those locations as well, and will be mailed to us. So there's, there's multiple places for people to drop off the ballot. But you are correct, sir, that there is a place for people to make an attestation. It is required for us to do it. We are not allowed to deny a ballot or deny an envelope if it is not signed.
So I'm hearing it is superfluous. There's not really a reason for it. I mean, it doesn't, there, there's not a, a reason that it is there to, or a mechanism for it. So.
It's, it's fair to say that, that, that place on the ballot envelope does not serve an overriding purpose anymore.
Okay. That's what I needed to hear. Thank you. I appreciate that. Because that helps me with the public when they ask that question, right?
Right.
Now I got it straight from the source.
Just a quick, quick question.
Sure.
What is this election going to cost?
Elections are worth every penny, sir.
No, no, no. No, I, because I, you know, there's a lot of work that goes into it at a cost. And that's to ensure that, you know, our, everybody gets a vote to, they can vote, and that vote gets counted.
John, John, I believe has the exact number or closer to, but we're north of 2 million.
Yeah, I, I think our, our budget, we requested 2.4 million as the base.
Supervisor Williams.
You mentioned earlier that, you said that the different locations will have people there for like, for security purposes. I just want to make sure everybody feel comfortable being able to go and cast their ballot if they're going to the polling places or going to the drop boxes.
No, so to be clear, we do not have security at the polling places. What we do instead do is brief our local police force and sheriff on where the locations are, make sure they're aware and are able to respond quickly should there be an incident that is not de-escalatable by the staff there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Supervisor Hannigan.
I was just going to share, it was going to be more expensive if there was somebody else on the ballot. So I think that, you know, this is probably pretty good. We should be grateful. And thank you for the presentation. I love the checks and balances.
Thank you for that. And I do have some cards from the public on this item. So we'll take public comment now.
And there's no action, right?
No action. It's just a presentation. And the first is Ms., I hope I get this right, Cicado?
Cicado.
Cicado. Got it. Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Denise Cicado. My colleagues and I live in Solano County, and we are volunteers with the United Sovereign Americans. The United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today we come to you as concerned citizens sharing alarming information in our state's voter roll database. An analysis of the 2022 election researched by highly qualified data teams using only official data provided by California election officials indicates serious issues with compliance of federal law. Here we are. We are here to present to you and the public the results of that analysis, showing that votes cast, counted, and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution and under federal law. We are not here to cast blame nor aspersions on any elected official, nor do we advocate for overturning or rerunning any past election. This resolution demands an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections. It includes a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. Your written copy cites U.S. Supreme Court precedents and federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for such actions. We urge you to carefully read it and put this resolution on the agenda for the next Board of Supervisors meeting, where you can vote, vote to join us in support of fair, honest, and valid elections. Thank you.
Thank you. The next up is Lay Sutherland. The next up is Lee Sutherland.
And it is Lee Sutherland.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I get it all the time. Resolution for a legally valid 2024 general election, whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections, whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion and manipulation. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate, and that's per the National Voter Registration Act of 1993. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters. That's the U.S. Constitution, Fourteenth Amendment, Section 2. Number three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. And number four, there can be no more than one in one hundred and twenty-five thousand ballots in error by the voting system, and that is the Help America Vote 2002. Whereas the analysis of the California 2022 general election has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including five million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred and ninety-eight ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database, two million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine votes cast by ineligible or uncertain voters, one hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-five more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast these ballots, two million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and forty-nine apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. The maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election was ninety-nine-zero. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Charlene Phipps.
Good morning. My name is Charlene Phipps. Certification, as defined by law, is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of 2022 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal, whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Whereas the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of these United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us and demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity, and eligibility required to register and vote, not anonymous attestation. Excuse me. Voter rolls certified accurate and available for public review and challenge thirty days before the start of early voting. Hand-marked, secure ballots similar to, similar to currency. Where image technology is used for tabulation, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. I think I forgot to say the numbers. That was number four. Five, adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witness after given full and effective observation rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Paul Troxel.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paul Troxel. Number six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations, and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including auditability and witness transfer with paper records. Number seven, a national institute of standards and technology compliant randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a ninety-five percent confidence, confidence level of all elections pursuant to the Fourteenth Amendment, Section 2, must be performed. Number eight, the total of unique variances above is more, if the total of the unique variances above is more than ten percent of the margin of victory, a new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected unless the issues can be provably corrected by a manual hand recount and a full review of the records. Number nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved that the Solano County Board of Supervisors stands in support with the concerns and remedies presented here, we implore the California Legislature, federal legislators, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, and both California Secretary of State and the County Registrar of Voters to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people. That concludes the resolution. Please visit the United Sovereign Americans website to learn more about our organization and our general goal to restore valid elections throughout our country. UniteForFreedom.com. That's unite, the number four, Freedom.com. Thank you. I also have copies for the board. I appreciate very much your time, and thank you.
Thank you. I have no more cards on this item. I see no more questions from the board. So, with that, thank you for the presentation, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, that brings us to item nineteen, ma'am.
Consider introducing an ordinance to repeal Chapter 13.5 of the Solano County Code concerning underground storage of hazardous substances.
Thank you, Chair Mashburn, board members for your time this morning. This is a long time coming. Over thirty years ago, the county adopted a code to help with the enforcement of underground storage tanks in our hazardous materials program. And since that time, the state has made some very robust changes to the regulations that have rendered our code, Chapter 13.5, basically superseded. And, and so, really, so, in a recent COOPA audit from the state, one of their observations was that, you know, our, our code was outdated and, and should be repealed. And, and so, that's why we're here today to introduce this ordinance. And I'd like to turn it over to our subject matter expert, Lori Masala.
Lori, just tell us to do it.
Yeah, it's, it's been a long time coming. I actually tried to get this on calendar over a decade ago, and a certain individual pretty high up kind of, I, I think the calendar was too full, and she said, let's put this in abeyance, and it never got put back on, so I apologize for that. But, yeah, the, the program is extremely robust. There's an entire set of regulations in Title 23 that cover all of this much more specifically. So, it's, it's more than time that this should be, should be done. It's a state program.
All right.
I have no public comment on it, so there's apparently no questions from the board. I got a motion in a second.
And it comes back in thirty days?
It'll come back in two weeks.
Oh, two weeks, okay. Just the introduction.
Thank you.
This is the introduction way further.
All of that.
All of it.
I heard that's, that's what Ernst.
The order by a five-o vote.
All right. With that, Madam Clerk. That brings us to closed session.
Thank you. Thank you.
Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, Section 54956.9A, PW Fund B Development LLC and Buzz Oats Construction, Inc., the Solano County Airport Land Use Commission, County of Solano, Solano County Department of Resource Management, and DOZ 1 through 10, Solano County Superior Court Case Number CU 2407026.
All right. So, with that, and we're not going to have anything to report out. Okay, so, we're going to now go to board member comments. So, you know where I always start.
Hang on.
All right.
In memory of a very dear friend of mine. Give me a second because I want to make sure I say all the right things. Let's see, where are we? Here we are. Yeah, gosh, apologies. I should have known. I'm adjourning this meeting in memory of Verna Mustico. Verna peacefully passed away on September 11th with her family by her side. She was deceased by her loving husband of fifty-eight years, Peter, who left us in 2019. Verna was born in Oklahoma in September 1933. She moved to Vallejo in 1950. And there's gaps there. I have lots of questions because it goes on to say, together, they built their life with love for each other and their community, which is so true. Verna was the broker-owner of Mustico Realty and Mustico Realty Property Management for over forty years. She was truly a trailblazer when it came to real estate in Vallejo. She earned the respect and admiration of many around her and held many leadership roles with different organizations. She was, which really was a reflection of her dedication to the community. She was truly involved in Vallejo. She was a pivotal, pivotal part of many organizations. She was a member of the Solano Association of Realtors. She was a joiner. The Vallejo Rotary Club, Vallejo Chamber of Commerce, Vallejo Symphony, Salvation Army, Advisory Board, Tour University, Vallejo Planning Commission, Vallejo Elks, Vallejo Redevelopment Commission, the Lions, Seroptimus International, the Fire Department. I don't know why that's in there, but JFK Library, Sons of Italy. She also spearheaded, and this is what Verna is known for, the, the drive to raise funds to build the Sutter-Solano Hospital helipad in the east wing of the hospital and many more additions to Sutter Hospital in Vallejo. She is survived by her two daughters, Debbie Mustico Morgan and Sandy Mustico, and son-in-law Tom Morgan. She leaves behind five grandchildren, ten great-grandchildren, who are all her favorites. But I have a really funny story about, I have several funny stories about Verna, but when I first met her, I was new to the Vallejo Chamber of Commerce. I had worked for State Farm Insurance, and the company had decided to build a office space in Vallejo to house two hundred and twenty call center employees, and that was something that I worked very closely with the city. And when I, and of course, when you show up at the city, the chamber gets involved, you know, notices that you're there, and they're like, you need to come on board. And at the time, Michael was coming in as president, and so, he kept calling me like, can you, can you be in charge of this particular commission? I'm like, yes, sure, sure. And so, I meet Verna. Verna came in dressed to the nines as always, and she had this beautiful, bright red seatbelt bag, and she puts it right on the table in the conference room where we were meeting. I almost slid across that table to grab that bag, like, where did you find this? This is so gorgeous. Anyway, that was our first meeting, and we always laughed about this, this story because it was kind of ridiculous.
Did it bag?
Not only, I have many seatbelt bags. If anybody wants to buy them, I have them, you know, they're available because I haven't used one in a long time. But Verna was a true close horse and just a wonderful lady, just, just adored everybody, and you knew she loved you just because how she, how she interacted with you on a, you know, she was just that type of an individual. So, Verna was, just celebrated her ninety-first birthday, and she's going to be missed by many at all. So, thank you for letting me do that. That's all I have, Chair.
Supervisor Williams.
I too want to close in adjournment of Louise Ward. Louise and I actually attended Solano Community College together. We were working on our licensing to become Realtors. We both graduated together and did become Realtors, but she actually passed away on August 25th, 2024. She was a member of Mount Calvary Missionary Church. But I just wanted to read a little bit about her. She was such a really, really sweet woman, just great smile, easy to talk to. She was just a beautiful person. And the Lord bless Clarence and Tommy Jane Bethel and the world with the birth of amazing warrior Louise. She was born in Bennettville, South Carolina on April 29th, 1961. She accepted Christ at an early age and joined the Pleasant Hill Missionary Baptist Church in South Carolina. She met her husband, Anthony Ward, who she worked with. He owned the real estate agency that they worked together. And after marriage, they relocated to Northern California and joined, and she joined him in membership at the Mount Calvary Baptist Church, where she became a faithful member, deaconess, and choir member. And 2005, Louise and Anthony opened Ward's Realty and Loan, Inc., where Louise originated FHA, VA, Cal-Vet, and conventional mortgage loans. Louise loved God, and she loved people. Her contagious smile would light up any room during her many stays in the various hospitals and doctor's offices. She took every opportunity to lift her Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, up. Her battle cry was, if you don't know Him, get to know Him. She was, she had a very generous, uncompromising, and discerning spirit. She, she tried helping others whenever she found a need. Unfortunately, Louise, who had an adventurous spirit and loved to travel abroad, she loved Rome and Greece, and she was just blessed to have those experiences. However, she left this life on, on August 25th, 2004, just two weeks before her twenty-ninth wedding anniversary. Louise left to cherish her fond memories, her devoted and faithful husband, Anthony, her bonus son, Antonio, her grandchildren, and countless cousins and family members, and the members of Mount Calvary Church. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge her and, and her contributions to this world. Thank you.
Supervisor Brown.
I have three. I'm going to do, I'm not going to get through this first one very well, so just bear with me. Michael Stanley was born August 8th, 1948 in Brownsville, Texas. Brownsville, excuse me, Brownsville is right on the Mexican border, opposite, opposite Metamoros, Mexico. He used to spend a lot of time in Metamoros as a teenager. Mike joined the Navy and later the U.S. Coast Guard. He retired as an officer from the Coast Guard. During his service. the U.S. Coast Guard. He retired as an officer from the Coast Guard. During his service time, he served in Vietnam, Alaska, among many other places. He was an active member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, where he once served as the local chapter's chaplain. He moved back to the Bay Area about 15 years ago. He became aware, if not active, in local Vallejo politics. Over the years, he made lots of close friends and had a real love for the city. He loved that Vallejo was a diverse community. Although Mike self-identified as a Buddhist, he had a great respect for all beliefs, and that was definitely what happened last week. In later years, Mike traveled with Miguel to Europe several times. One of Mike's favorite places in the world is Mexico City. He also worked with Cliff Morrison, a director of the National AIDS Conferences in an administrative capacity. And this is the part, he also worked at Georgetown University in Marshington, D.C. And when my daughter was trying to decide where to go, he spent time talking with her. And I thought that was just really sweet of him. Always friendly, kind, and generous, and he was much loved by everyone, and he will definitely be missed. I almost made it. Okay, thanks, guys. You guys are so, I just should buy you some of this and just keep it right here. When I was looking for an obituary for Michael, we found out, none of us knew, that Berkey Worrell had passed away. And so I want to adjourn in memory of Berkey. Berkey, 76, was called to eternal rest on August 12th, 2024, at his home in Vallejo, California. He was born December 29th, 1947, in Berkeley, California. And I always teased him and called him Berkeley because his name is Berkey. And, you know, confusion on language here. He was the youngest of four children. He graduated from St. Vincent's High School in Vallejo. He served the country in the U.S. Army in Vietnam. After the Army, he became a Vallejo Police Officer and found time to complete his BA at UC Davis. He spent 29 years and retired from the Vallejo Police Department. And he served on the Vallejo School Board, which is that and being a Democrat is where I met him. And he was a member and president for 10 years, and he was with the Vallejo Police Officers Association. He had a sense of humor. As one of my friends said, he was a curmudgeon, I'm saying that wrong. But he, he loved, yeah, he, he was always out. He loved cruises, definitely loved car races. He survived by his brother and to many of his nieces and nephews. And I'm, when, when a certain person passed away, he kind of became remote, but hey, Berkey, we miss you. One more. The gentleman who helps us with our AV, Jenrick, his mom passed away. Jennifer, 72, passed away August 31st, 2024, in Concord, after a prolonged battle against ovarian cancer. She was born April 28th, 1952, in the Philippines, married, came to Martinez, California, had a wonderful son who I love. I love you, Jenrick. I know you're hearing this. She worked for VA and then went to Wells Fargo, where she retired at a young age. She was a devout Catholic, has two grandchildren, did, devoted a lot of time to many causes, such as assisting a home for abused children and helping the poverty, poverty-stricken members of a native tribe in the Philippines. And what she loved the most was being a mother and a grandmother. And she's survived by her husband, and then Jenrick, her daughter-in-law, and her two great-grandchildren, whom I love buying books for. And, and so, Jenrick, I hope I'm adjourning okay with your mom. So the last two weeks have been really rough. So thank you all for letting me get through it.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Monica.
It's all right. It's, you know, I know it's the circle of life, and I understand all that, but it's just hard.
I understand, absolutely. We've all had those times up here.
Yeah.
I'm good.
You're good. I'm good as well. So with that, we will adjourn this meeting into closed session, and there will not be a report out.
I just have to move today. Two resolutions in one second.
Good thing you got these little arrows to put up my glasses on.
I want to make sure I get the spelling of your guys' names. Wait, you guys be careful. His microphone is not turning off for some reason. So I just want you to be aware that there's a mic on.
Live mic.
Live mic.